Order order at seven o'clock. Thank you. We have a quorum and then some. So it's good. Looks like we have Louise, Linda, Kurt, David Zertz, two. Okay, good. That was David or not. Okay.
Mark, Dave Hewitt here on the phone.
Yeah, I see there now. He didn't have your name first. Got you. All right. Thank you. All right, everybody. Thanks for attending. We'll go ahead and get started. Item, agenda item number one. Called the order of Pledge of Allegiance. Let's go ahead and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. More important now than ever, I think. Okay, agenda item number two is our public speak. Do we have anybody who would like to offer any public comments? All right, hearing none. Move on to item number three, which is additions and deletions of the agenda items.
I have one marked. It could probably go under after Eric's CIP report. It's the CIP approval of the fire commission's requests.
Okay, would this be under CIP recommendations or?
Yes, yeah, yeah, you can put it there.
So it'd be item D four. Okay, you want to make a motion that we amend the agenda to add item D four?
I will, yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, and the the exact agenda item is?
The cap improvement's approval of the fire commission request.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Agenda change? Okay, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain.
And Kurt will abstain. We have one abstention. Thank you. Okay, motion passes. You got that, Amanda? Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other additions or deletions, changes to the agenda? Okay, I was gonna propose maybe a discussion of the proposed school budget that Kurt and the board of selectmen workshop. But I think I'm gonna hold that off until we we maybe get a full revised budget and see where that goes. We can discuss it briefly, maybe under Eric's. Summary if Eric wants to talk a little bit about that, but we'll see. Okay, let's move on to item number four, which is the town administrator's report. Eric, do you want to go ahead and give us your report?
Yep. Amanda, can I share my screen? All right, I got a lot of things open. Hopefully I choose the right one.
You can do it.
All right, hopefully you should be saying a word, Doc. Okay, real quick, most of you probably know at this point, but Ed Kasich, the longtime Public Works. Foreman died a few weeks ago, so that really sucked. He worked for the town for thirty-three years. Probably about the longest serving employee we've had. Then he died shortly after he retired. So that was kind of a real bummer. For the town. We, in turning to other news.
Eric just questioned, did the town do anything on his behalf?
So we have a plaque that we were going to give to him, but he died before we gave it to him. So we're thinking about, we need to come up with some kind of background to put it on, and I was planning on putting it. Either in the Public Works building or in the town hall. We haven't quite decided yet. So we are gonna do something. It's just not quite sure exactly what yet.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
So many of you know COVID is still obviously an issue in the state. We've been fortunate that a lot of our EMS first responders. Have been able to get their shots and people seventy-five and older. They've been chunking away at getting all the the shots. I know my father's shot is next week. We've already heard from a bunch of the seniors. That they've been able to get their shots already. We're still being affected by this in Andover. We're up to a hundred and twenty-four positive cases in town Andover as of this date. And a couple of deaths. We had a really big spike, as you can see, and it's tailing off. And we're averaging about fifty-five cases per day per a hundred thousand population. So we're still up there. We really don't know what further impact that's going to have. At this point, the governor has extended the executive order through the middle of April. What we don't know is how this is going to affect the budget process. So as you know, the town hall is still, you know, open only by appointment. But so far, that hasn't affected collections. And we had the town meeting. And vote for land acquisition, and that was successfully done with a drive-by vote. So that vote passed sixty-two to two, and we used it to kind of work out the kinks and anticipation. That there's a good chance we would do a drive-by referendum this summer, and we would do the referendum as a drive-by. Not sure we'll be able to do that, or we'll have to do that, but we're part of the reason why we wanted to do it for the land. Acquisition is for practice. So it did appear pretty successful. That worked a lot better than trying to do a strictly online meeting. We are still searching for a finance director. We got all the way up to the job offer. Stage for one candidate, and for one reason or another, it did not work out. We found out today we have gotten two pretty qualified applicants in. That both have significant finance and school finance backgrounds. So we're hopefully gonna try to put together interviews, maybe as soon as next week, if we can get everybody on board. And interview a couple of people for that. Until then, Marina Pendolfi is kind of holding down the fort. And we've been getting some support with. The, you know, previous business manager for AES has been coming in and helping us out occasionally. We did have some changes in the building department that will, the the major change as far as the town's concerned. Is we have one less town employee, but we have, we picked up. That employee essentially is a shared service with the town of Bolton. It's a little more expensive, but it looks like we're gonna get a lot better service out of the out of the mix. And we adjusted the fee schedule for the building department to more than accommodate that. Because our fees really hadn't been updated in, you know, a lot of years. Because the old building official was adamant that they not be. So should be relatively cost neutral. Actually, probably a little cost positive for the town, that particular change. Social services, we're still running social services. You know, we've had a couple emergency requests, but nothing serious. We've had a couple, we have, we do have to fix the the van for senior services. That got flagged on one of the, we have to get them safety checked every year, and the Braun ramp had some issues that we're having to address. But that's within budget. Talked about land acquisition. The library vandal murals are going to court sometime in March. Not too big a deal. And in Public Works, Jay Tuttle has taken over as the Public Works supervisor. That seems to be going going pretty well, as has Richard Bacon, who's the other employee that we hired. So far this year, we've had five plowable events. We really only had one big plowable event. But we've been out salping a bunch of times. So far, we haven't had too many issues, and I thought you guys would be interested to know, when we kind of do the math. Every time we sent send the plow trucks out to do a pass on the roads after hours, it costs us about eleven hundred dollars. And that's about seven hundred in salt and about three hundred and sixty dollars in labor. Just so you kind of get a feel for for what it takes, you know, for something simple, like a simple pass of the roads. We have gone over to using a professional weather forecasting service called Weather Works. That seems to be kind of beneficial to the town. Costs about fifteen hundred bucks for the year. But if it helps you make better decisions on, you know, when to deploy the crew, it seems to be worth it. You know, we we experimented with a couple different services and demoed them both this this fall and early winter. We are in the works. We're still in design phase for the Bunker Hill Road Bridge. They're going to be hopefully closing the road sometime in February for a couple of days. And digging, doing test borings on both sides. So they've got to do like six or eight borings. To determine how deep the footings for the replacement bridge need to go. We're still on looking for a spring twenty twenty-two start date for the bridge. Starting around April, and that's gonna be good because it's actually gonna span two fiscal years. So, you know, well, we have some money in that fund already. We're gonna put more money in it this year. And then we'll have one more budget cycle to accommodate the the full cost of the bridge. Which is gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand, but we can't really give you anything more definite than that. Until we get up to the the design stage where we have a preliminary design.
Quick question. That four hundred is the four hundred to us, right?
Yeah, that's our take on it. Yep. Yeah, so the basic deal is with this bridge is. We, the federal government pays eighty percent of the cost. And the state has agreed, we got in kind of a special design program that the state is trying out. And so by being willing to participate in that program, the state pays for the there, the twenty percent. Of the engineering costs. So the first time we have to put out any money is, you know, when we put shovels in the ground and start digging holes. So it's a good thing for us. It also reduces our total cost to the town for this project. You know, somewhere around eighty thousand dollars, because the design costs themselves for the bridge. Is gonna be around four hundred thousand dollars total by by the time it's fully surveyed, fully designed, blah, blah, blah. So so that's good, anyway. I mean, you know, it's still four hundred thousand bucks, but it's better than four hundred and eighty thousand. We're also right now doing the survey and wetlands work for the replacement for the Hutchinson Road Culvert. That hopefully we're gonna have back in the next month. We have the funding right now in the Bridge and Culvert Permanent Fund. And the engineering and design work will be paid out of our existing town engineer budget. So we're in good shape with that right now. You know, and then just depending on what we end up back for cost basis for actually repairing it. We'll decide whether we can do it in with the following year's budget, you know, the budget where we'll approve this. You know, spring, or whether we have to put that off one more year and accumulate some more money to do it. Times Farm Bridge is still in the hold. We're waiting on the state to approve the engineers. That were in the inspectors that were reassigned to the project by CME Engineering. It's kind of ridiculous. The state's holding us up for no real good reason, but you know, that's the state. The steep grant, we have all the paperwork. It's about half submitted. We have some more stuff to to go. That's, the steep grant covers part of the costs of reconstructing. A portion of Long Hill Road and a portion of Shoddy Mill Road as part of our pavement. You know, we're still stuck waiting for the state to issue us a letter for an encroachment permit. You know, we reached out to them again last month, and you know, they keep assuring us they're working on it. But they've assured us of that, you know, every month for the last nine months at this point. So it's getting a little annoying. I'm planning on sticking Brandon Handfield on him and let him beat his head against him. Brandon's the guy that's acting as the town engineer. And the other thing I would say is, you know, we're obviously in revow. Revow has been going fairly smoothly. You know, we're, I think we're about two-thirds done with the initial revow and and data gathering for that. We have locked in a contract for next year for both heating oil and diesel. It's definitely not as low as last year, but it's pretty good in considering the uncertainty we have. We waited a long time and we actually waited a little too long, but you know, I think we were both thinking that. That as the pandemic really was spiking again in the US, you know, fuel prices would decrease dramatically. And frankly, they didn't. So so that's what we're locked in as for next year. And we did get our second half of the reimbursement for our COVID-related funds. We got an extra twenty-four thousand dollars from the state. Of which we've agreed to spend about four thousand dollars on for the new combined finance office. Buying basically two really good laptops and docking stations. So that both those employees can work either in the town and the school and do it seamlessly. So we've allocated a little bit of that money. The rest of it really isn't allocated. You know, at this point. The the other thing is, I know I talked to the board last June, I think. So my salary got screwed up pretty dramatically. I got overpaid when I was first hired. Because the old assistant finance officer couldn't divide, basically. So I've paid that money back over this year. I'm happy to, you know, show you the payment schedule if you really want to see it, but I did it all in last fiscal, you know, all in the. It'll all be in this fiscal year. So so the budget line item for me will come out considerably under for this year as I repaid. And so that's the major part of the report. So what I also wanted to do is talk a little bit about where we are in the budget, so you all know. And as you all know, our budget is basically, you can think of it as four parts. It is the budget for the Andover Elementary School, the budget for the regional school district. The general town budget, and then the capital, you know, portion of the town budget. So we have preliminary numbers for all four of those. The number for the elementary school represents about an eight point eight percent increase over what they got last year. So it's a fairly significant year-over-year increase. The RAM budget came in at about a four point one percent increase. But the good news for the town of Andover is that our percentage. You know, we we dropped in the number of students we had going to RAM at the same time the overall RAM population dropped. But ours dropped more than it dropped overall. So that means that if the RAM budget stayed level. The town of Andover's share of that would go down by about two percent. So it looks like the net effect of the current budget is about a two percent increase in the RAM budget. On the town side, what we're, I gave the Board of Selectmen a range of options. And on the general budget that ranges from, you know, basically plus one percent to minus one percent. In terms of a budget increase or decrease in the general budget, the real growth again is in the. You know, in the capital, you know, which which we discussed. And obviously, last year, we ended up trimming that capital pretty significantly. This year, the the capital budget is is put in as if it were fully funded. And, you know, when it comes to the Board of Finance, we can have a discussion about, you know, where that that ends us up. And whether we can actually afford to 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 fully fund that. So that's it for me for the initial report, unless you all have questions for me.
Eric? I had one question and a couple of comments. First question is regarding the COVID reimbursement that the town received. Have you been in contact with either Chief Mike or Dave Gustinian, the president of the Andover Fire Department Corporation? In regards to any funds that we've already spent for the first responders? I know we we have a, we have a room full of PPE, masks, you know, sheets, you name it. I'm not, I'm not quite sure. I don't think we've expended anything out of the fire commission budget, but I know they have. You know, been very, very diligent in getting the supplies needed for the first responders to run that ambulance. And about every other call that we go out on is a COVID-related call.
Sure.
So maybe you can reach out to either either Chief Mike or Dave Gustinian and see if there is any funds that they could use. And maybe we could, we could share a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I I haven't, you know, made any real recommendations on what we do with that funding. Up to this point. So so, yeah, I do. And actually, Amanda, I I had asked to speak to both Ron, Mike. And the library and ask what their expenses, their COVID-related expenses were. I know we rebated, I think we rebated both out of the initial COVID allotment we got. But we have not rebated anybody anything out of the the second one we got.
That's just, just. My first comment is, I think kudos should go out to the our new superintendent and the staff at AES. They're having face-to-face the school every day with the with the students and stuff. And so far have remained COVID-free up there. So they're doing something right. And I think they should be acknowledged for that. And also, your Public Works Department, the roads have never been. Been treated better than they are in the last few storms so far this year, even better than last year. So that's just the, just a couple of comments I would like to make.
I'll pass that on.
Yeah, you know, just a general comment about the school budget. I don't know. Diane, I think you were on the Board of Selectmen meeting last night, too. So there's, there's a lot of pointed questions to Valerie and and about the school budget. At an eight-point-plus percent increase, it's a, it's a pretty tough pill to swallow. We've got a lot of capital expenditures. Things that we've also got to face. You know, and we're still, of course, in the middle of a pandemic, and there's some some economic effects there, too. So it's, it's gonna get interesting. I know the Board of Selectmen's got several additional budget workshops. That they had scheduled at their meeting. Their plan at this point is to submit a budget to us on or before March first. So technically.
They talked a little about maybe having something like by the sixteenth. I don't know if they will or not. I don't.
We'll see. It's gonna, it's gonna take some work, right? You know, it sounds like.
I think if, I think that like your comment that you made is, we've got to get the detail. To make decisions without details.
Yeah, and we've had, you know, year-over-year decreases for a while, so I'm not surprised that they're pushing back. But eight-point-something percent is a dramatic number.
Yeah, it's a big number. No question about it.
Yeah, and especially, you know, we're looking at a RAM increase, and I get it finally, apparently we're over the hump. In terms of our RAM percentage, which is great. We've dealt with that the last few years, two, three years now, running. Where we were increasing as a percent of the student body, and now, and we always knew that we'd get to a certain point, we'd. Come back over that hump, and it looks like we finally got in there, which is great. But in the past, you know, we've spent several budget cycles, haggling with RAM, trying to tell them. They can't be coming in with these big increases when AES is coming in with decreases or flat budgets. Now the shoe's on the other foot a little bit, and that's something to, you know, talk to. I'll reach out. You know, I have a contact on the. Board of Ed that I can talk to and and try to get a sense for things, too.
So in in that, you you do bring up a good point, Rob, because I mean, one of my frustrations.
I knew this was coming up.
I expressed it last year. And I will admit to some extent that that's not really my business because I have no control over it. But RAM has declined by the, their total population is two-thirds. What it was eight years ago. And in that same period of time, their budget has never decreased. Last year, technically, it decreased by like point zero one percent. But they have consistently increased their budget, you know, when their student population has gone down really dramatically. And so their cost per student, now I was just doing the numbers today, their cost per student, if you take. All-in costs, which is every bit of revenue they have, divided by the number of students they have. Their full-up costs right now are about twenty-seven thousand nine hundred bucks, which is crazy. If we're being honest. You know, so so something has to be done to address that, because that is not, that's not really kosher.
Did you do the math on AES, by the way? I haven't. What the all-in per student cost is in AES?
I I have not, but only because the board specifically asked Valerie to do that. And I'll let her defend that number as.
The very pointed question that came up in the meeting last night, and frankly, I gotta have that answer, you know. And understand what the impact is, you know. It's only one-dimensional view, I know, understand that, you know, cost per pupil. There's a lot of factors that roll into that. You can't control everything, but it is at least something you have to look at. If you're that far out of line, you need to understand and explain why, you know.
Yeah, I perfectly understand that, you know, the facility is what it is, right? You have to keep that facility up regardless of your student population. That's fair, and they can come back to us and explain that, but, you know, that only goes so far. And, you know, we, we, this has been many years now where RAM seems to come in about a four percent increase ask every year. What, like, I don't know if you guys all remember, but my memory is, every year when we start this process. Four percent for RAM is standard, no matter the year, no matter what's going on. It's always four percent. So it 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 leads to a question in my mind, you know, that's unsustainable, basically. AES is a bit of a different issue, and, you know, like I said, I'm gonna, I have somebody I'm gonna talk to and and get it and try to get my arms around. What, eight point, what did you say? Eight point what percent?
It's like eight point four five is what I remember.
Basically, eight and a half. Yeah, it's a big jump, for sure, when it's forty percent of your town budget, give or take. It's a big number. That's enough to. Kick the heck out of us from the standpoint of putting money into capital.
I guess the thing that I don't understand, because there's a lot of talk at the meeting last night about COVID-related expenses and how, and I don't. I don't have a good handle on what has COVID cost us at AES. Do you know anything as far as dollars?
I mean, I see the stuff, you know, pickups and drop-offs, you know, I have two kids in AES, so I'm familiar with what some of their procedures. And I get it, you know, they're doing, they've changed up some things. There's some stuff they're doing, no question. And they are, to Curtis's point, they really have done a fantastic.
Right.
About COVID. Neither, you know, my kids have been going full-time to school and five days a week, and it's been seamless. It's fantastic. So they, you know, kudos for that, for sure, but what's the dollars and cents of that? And as as Eric probably can speak to on the town level, you have things that cost more. And then other places where it's actually cost us a little less, and you you net that out, and you figure out what the impact is. And so that's what we need to see. And I suspect AES is probably trying to do a lot like what the town is trying to do with the, with our capital budget. Which is that there's some pent-up stuff that they've been wanting to do. That we've been, you know, telling them year after year, we've had budget crunches and saying, no, we we need a flat budget, and so they produced it. But maybe there's some pent-up stuff, and they need to show us that. What is it?
Right.
I'm not against the increase, per se, but eight and a half is, I don't know that's doable. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know that's doable. I don't know if that's possible.
I mean, enrollment is flat, so.
Right. So what's it for? Yeah.
Last year we had. The excess that money that we saved that we put into this year's budget for covid expenses at the AES level. So I just don't understand. How that all comes out in the wash. Do you know what I mean? And why they think their budget needs to go up because of covid. Because they shouldn't be spending more money next year for covid because we've already spent that kind of money. We should have a good baseline of what it was costing us this year. To go into next year.
Fair point.
I don't know.
Yeah, Valerie had a fairly.
I guess that's what I'm saying.
Bald presentation, but I, you know, I'm just don't know. It's not always clear, you know, line item by line item, what in, and I've. I've seen this in other meetings too, where, you know, what's going where and what it's really, you know. Things have shifted around sometimes in those budgets and I think they just need to take a really hard look at it and try to understand it. Again, I, I, you know, I'm a full supporter of the schools, absolutely, but. I think we need to understand what's going in there and, you know, how, how do you justify any increase, much less eight and a half percent? That's a tough one.
Are we at a disadvantage now because Laura's retired and is kind of out of the picture and we don't have a new finance director and.
But Laura had a pretty big hand in helping put this together.
But as far as we dig in, who's gonna answer all the questions? Do you know what I mean? I mean.
Somebody there is gonna have to.
Superintendent.
No way they're getting that kind of increase or anything close to it. We don't, you know, if you don't have some very good answers.
I, I think, I, I think the end of the day, we're gonna end up in one of these meetings with our super. Yeah, explaining these things to us.
It's probably gonna have to come to that, if you get anywhere close.
I mean, I, again, you know, I, I'm all for, like I said, I had two kids in that school and it's fantastic. It's great. But. We slashed our capital budget to the bone last year. And now. We, we, hopefully I was thinking maybe this year we loosen up a bit and put some money in capital. And now it's like, okay, how do you do that and have an eight percent AES increase? I, I don't know, that's. I don't think the math can remotely work. On that.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing too, to keep in mind is that. You know, this early in the budget year, there are an immense number of unknowns. I mean, we don't have final numbers yet back from healthcare. We don't have an approved AHM budget yet. We don't, well, we do have a, a health department budget, we passed that. So there's a lot of things that we don't. At this point have firm numbers on. From the town's end, the things that we do have firm numbers on. Are coming in pretty well. I mean, the, the. Number from the health department is running about, you know, around three and a half percent increase. But that's a pretty small percentage of our budget. HM is looking like it's probably somewhat under. A three percent, but again, that hasn't been finalized yet. The only thing you will see is that, actually, you know what? We'll talk about that when we get to AHM report. The Kermont, the insurance, we got the, the quote back from both. Our town general liability policy as well as the workers' comp. Our workers' comp went down pretty significantly. Our general insurance went up a little bit. The net is about a five hundred dollar decrease. In, you know, total insurance through Karma. And that's balanced with the fire departments, the, the standalone policy we have for their vehicles has gone up about five hundred. So insurance has basically come out completely flat. The only, yeah, so, so right now that, that looks pretty promising. Although we are still pursuing a standalone, you know, cyber risk policy going forward. Because I think that's gonna. Prove to be. You know, important. So, you know, the, the budgets have a lot of flux in them right now. I, I don't think none of the flux are big dollars. So I, I think at least at the town's level, you know, I could live with the budget, you know, that we have. But the, the, the biggest issue we face going forward is the fact that. The last three years, we have offset a considerable amount of our capital spending with.
Unbalanced.
With fund balance and last year by repurposing other funds. So if you look at two years ago, we put about a million dollars back into the, the, the. The capital essentially by tapping the unexpended fund balance. Last year we put, you know, four hundred plus thousand in and we rearranged about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of funds. But the, and then if you remember this. At the end of this fiscal year, we took the excess. And plowed it right back into capital funds to bring them up closer to what we had originally wanted to budget. So the bottom line is we tapped that source completely. So we're, even if all the budgets came out exactly the way they were last year and we didn't ask for any increase. Anywhere, we would still be looking for seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in increased taxation. So we have a really big hurdle to clear this year, just so that you're all.
Yeah, because the whole idea was to get our, uh, on a signed fund balance down to about ten, ten percent of operating budget and where it should be there now. Whether it's ten or ten and a half or eleven or we're gonna be in that ballpark. There's no more to, we can't keep going to that well. And that was something we all saw coming. And now we're here.
Mark, Mark, do we know what the RAM increase is gonna be? I may have missed it.
Wasn't it four percent, Eric, you said, and about, about our share drops and so it nets out to about two?
Yeah, so our net is about a two percent increase as their budget stands right now.
Well, I'm just thinking that maybe, you know. Stephanie Bancroft, the chair, chairwoman of RAM, who does live here in Andover. And also our new superintendent AES along with Shannon Lowden should, should be prepared to. You know, discuss their budget and, and give us some answers that I'm sure we're all gonna have.
I'm gonna talk to Shannon later tonight, by the way.
Okay, good.
And if you want, if you wanna look online, the AES budget presentation is online. It's about an hour and ten minutes long. So if you wanna read through this superintendent's full budget presentation. To the board of Ed that is available. And the RAM budget, preliminary budget. A document is just was available as of yesterday.
Eric, is that on the town website or AES's?
Not on town, is it, it must be on RAM, but RAM website or?
So AES is on the school board website.
AES, the, the, the presentation's also in the board of selectmen pack and from yesterday too, so you can look at it there.
Yeah, so and Amanda can get that to you, the links to you, so you can find that information easily. If you wanna go through those.
Now, they, they also did reach an agreement with the Andover Teachers Association, right? With a new contract that was negotiated.
Yep, I do have a new contract with the teachers. They have not been able to complete the contract with the non certs. That's been going on for a long time.
I'd like to have some information regarding that, you know, both of them actually. Also.
Okay, well, I, I think, you know, like you said, the, the board of selectmen's looking at. Some budget workshops, they asked Valerie to come back with some information. I don't know if there's gonna be any additional presentations planned, but. I, I think maybe as they get closer, you know, we, we'll absolutely gonna need to have. Have a closer view of that and I'm sure there'll be a part of it.
I found it. In the special packet, I see it. There's a huge presentation here. Yep, I got it. Okay.
A little odd to follow through, but it is all there.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Eric? All right, let's go ahead and we'll roll to number agenda item number five A, which is the town budget summary. Eric, do you have any input on here?
Yeah, overall, we're doing pretty well in on spending at the end of the budget summary. There are a series of requests to approve overages. The board of selectmen have approved them and if you remember the things that are over five thousand, come back to you. In the board of finance has to approve the overages.
Right.
Or I guess if you don't, then I come back to you with. A shift from a different budget. So that's at the end of the packet. You know, there's a couple areas where we're still. Gonna be over, but the overall budget is well under control and should be coming in, you know, considerably under. You know, we're basically because of covid, there's a bunch of things that we really haven't. We haven't made some of the personnel changes. You know, so. So overall, we're in good condition.
Public Works is still running pretty high. I mean, you expect to be able to cover that still with.
So I think yes. I think one thing we're already basically at the end of January. And we've done pretty well on the snow removal portion. So we're gonna, we should have some funds to backfill there. You know, and right now we're, we've, for whatever reason, we've had a really light year on maintenance. We haven't broken a lot of stuff. Which has been very nice. So our, our vehicle maintenance budget is way underspent. However, we have also decided that if we can do it, we're going to pay for the repairs. To one of the plow trucks through that as opposed to seeking a capital. Basically, we made the decision that instead of trying to rebody one of the plow trucks. That we're going to, you know, basically just re-weld. And then try to repaint the vehicle and, and get it. You know, through to the end of its life that way as opposed to re-bodding, which is what we typically do. And we are gonna try to do that out of maintenance. So by the time we get through with the year, we're going to spend the majority of the money in that budget, but I think we'll be okay.
All right, and we're a little proportionally a little high on insurance. I assume that's just timing on payments and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, overall on insurance, we're fine.
Nothing unusual there, okay. I don't have anything else on the. On the budget summary myself.
The other one we may end up going over is on the. In the, the, the town general legal retainer fund. Which basically covers two things. That covers the cost of our general town attorney who's on. Retainer, so his costs are fixed, but the variable costs in that are the. Town's labor attorney. And since we've had a number of labor issues we've been working through. And we're going to be going into union negotiations sometime relatively soon this spring. I, I would anticipate we're gonna be pushing the end of that budget. But we also haven't spent anything out of the assessor legal, you know, council budget. So I think we would, we would end up taking it out of the. The general, that legal budget pool. You know. So far, it doesn't seem like there's anything that really affects the assessor's office in this year or with this grand list. Next year when we do revale is gonna be a different story. I mean, we typically. Get sued at least three times per revale year. So I think we can anticipate that budget going up next year. But that's basically where we are.
Any questions for Eric on the budget summaries? Okay, I guess we can then. Move on to item. I guess it's six A, the. Budget transfer supplemental appropriations. Eric, can I kinda run through these for the over expenditure request? I guess it's really, you really don't have any supplementals, right?
Sure, yeah. Let me just see if I can blow this up and then share my screen.
In, in advance, I would. Just make a minor request that you're a little more careful with your handwriting on these, so we can actually read them or.
Well, that's, that's why I gave you an Excel spreadsheet summary, because I know my handwriting is atrocious.
Okay.
Okay, so that is all of our overage requests to date that we've had. You already, as a board of finance, approved the, the overage for the brush pile. The mobile phone is small enough that you don't need to approve it. So the two you have to approve, or I would like you to approve, would be the. The temporary public works. The, the temporary labor line for public works. And then the. The overtime for public works line items. Those are the only two that are big enough that trip. Review by the. Board of Finance or likely will. You know, trip your review. So we've talked about the brush pile. The temp in public works was simply the, the fact that we made a decision to go to a four person public works crew. And the board of selectmen was not gonna allow me to hire anybody until Eddie actually resigned. You know, so what I did is I basically hired Richard Bagan as temp help. And over, ran over that line item knowing that. You know, there was money, we were paying him less than we would be paying. A full time employee and we wouldn't be paying him benefits. So it was much cheaper to the town to pay him as a temp employee until I had permission than it would be to employ him as. You know, a regular employee. So yes, we overexpent that, but we, at the same time, we underexpent. The, the equivalent amount. In the, the regular employee line item. The overtime in public works is mostly because we've had an enormous number of storm callouts this year. Number one, that's the majority of the money that, that's different because. I mean, when you're sitting here cutting up trees on a Saturday or a Sunday, you know, and you got the full crew out responding to storms. You know, in fact, that very first storm for AESA. More than took out our entire annual overtime public works budget. So, you know, that, that's the majority of it. The other thing. You know, that I've been realizing is that a lot of the, the roadwork projects that we do. We use our public works employees as the road guards because it tends to be a lot cheaper. You know, paying them, you know, having them do it than hiring flaggers on the outside. So the, 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 the problem is, you know, paving crews, they don't work a convenient eight hour day. You know, they get there in the morning and they work till the job is done, you know, and if that's an eleven hour day, that's an eleven hour day, but for us. It means we're paying OT on the end for whoever's there staying for the flagging. So those are the two major line items that, that really need approval from the board of finance.
With it, just to comment on the latter, that sounds like something that you can manage and, you know, to anticipate for next year's budget.
Yeah, and I, I think we did adjust to that. The temp for public works, because we've now gone to a fourth person, I don't think we're gonna use very often. You know, but the overtime, I, I think we had an unrealistically small amount of overtime in our budget. You know, but we also had an awful lot of storms this year, so we had an awful lot more events that required. You know, overtime than we did in a normal year. So it's somewhere in the middle.
Anybody have any questions for Eric on the, on the budget transfer request supplemental appropriations? Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the over expenditure request?
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, just to clarify, what we would be doing is Rob's making a motion to approve the over expenditure in the Public Works Department budget. There's $5,000, I'm sorry, additional $11,000 for temp labor and public works, and additional $4,000 requested for overtime in public works. Does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Louise, seconds. Further discussion. Hearing none, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand, aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the motion is approved. Thank you, guys. All right, let's move on to item. Excuse me, our agenda, uh, agenda item seven, we have old business, seven A is the COVID-19 update. Eric, you pretty much covered that in your town manager's report. Do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I think I pretty well covered that, what I wanted to cover there.
Okay. And item, does anybody have any other questions on that before we move on? Want a pre-diskussion?
Ju- ju- just to note, the, most of the firefighters are getting their second, second vaccine shot, you know, mostly this week, and I myself am going Friday for my second, so.
Good.
Things are looking good next door.
Good to hear, that's good. Thanks for that, Kurt. Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll move on to item seven B, which is the AHM and Town Agreement, which Eric has kindly brought forth on the screen here.
Hey, Mark.
Yep, David?
I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, my unmute wasn't working. I just wanted to comment on the shots, if anybody has any anxieties. I had both mine, I had zero issues, and a lot of my staff has it. Out of all my staff, we only had one that had some like flu-like symptoms. So Kurt, or anybody else that they're worried about it, that, that's kind of our result, what we've had.
No, good to hear. They've had both of them already?
Yeah, most of us have.
Thanks, thanks, Dave, because my wife and I, my wife been telling me that the second shot, from what she's heard, is, you know, has all kinds of problems, but I'm not worried about it.
Yeah, I've heard that too, that sometimes the second one's a little tougher, because the immune response kicks in a little there.
The only thing I would say is you might want to pop a couple Motrin that night before you go to bed, because your joints in your arm might hurt a little, but I didn't have any issues.
Great. Yeah, and, and Dave, you'll be happy to know that the tracking device that was injected with the shot is working perfectly. I can see all the fire department employees right up on my screen, you know, like where they are.
Eric, Eric, Eric.
Come on.
Yeah.
Point of order. Mister, Mister Anderson would, was making a sarcastic statement there. All right, let's move on if we could. Again, item seven B, AHM and Town Agreement. Eric, I believe that the Board of Selectmen has already approved this, correct?
Yeah, the, the Board of Selectmen has approved it, but I wanted to bring it to your attention also. There are two changes in this agreement that affect the town. The, the first is that they've again tweaked the formula by which they apportioned the cost for the service between the three towns. But I looked at it kind of like historically, and then I looked at it with our current budget and our current numbers. And what I concluded is it didn't make a damn, a bit of difference. All three formulas that they used essentially came up with the same cost basis for the town of Andover. So the, the, the question was how you fairly determine what the, what each town pays? And the, the end result is we settle on a formula that is 50% weighted by the population of each town as determined by the, every 10-year census. And the second factor is the school age population, so the population of all students K through 12. You know, which seems to be as fair a formula as any. The original formula was, had an additional weighting factor for how many people were in the high school, but that meant they were, they were essentially double counting all the kids in grade seven through 12. So I think the simple, the formula now is a little simpler. It does seem to accurately reflect each town's demographic and how much use they should get. So, so that's what, what we went with. The second thing is there was a request by several of the towns to, or at least one of the towns, to bill, instead of billing the elementary school and then also the town, and splitting the bill to only supply each municipality with one bill. And regardless of whether that, that number is in the school's budget or the town's budget, it's still taxpayer dollars and it doesn't change the bottom line. So those are really the two changes. Ultimately, if all three towns adopt this and it goes into effect, the town's budget will include 100% of the cost for AHM as opposed to now, when half the cost shows up in our budget and half the cost shows up in the school's budget. So that's pretty much it. Linda, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I don't know why my picture didn't show up tonight. But not really, but, um, they are going to, they, they're gonna have their budget, I think, by the end of February. So we'll know what, um, it's going to be. Oh, there I am. No, but if anybody does have any questions about this document, you know, they can get ahold of me and I'll get an answer for them.
So clearly, as we develop the school budget, they're gonna need to be aware of whether they need to budget for the, you know, that half or not, depending on where that end up, it's up landing, and vice versa for the town, but, okay. All right, good. All right, thank you, Linda. Eric, anything else on that?
Uh, no, unless you have other questions for me on that.
Anybody have any questions for Eric or Linda or anyone? Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and move on to our next agenda item, which is number eight, new business. Discuss and act upon the following. Item eight A is the Finance Director position. Eric's already discussed this. We, as a committee, we had extended an offer, or Eric had extended an offer to, well, we as a town extended an offer to a candidate, did not work out, though that offer was withdrawn, we're back at square one. We have been soliciting applications, and you said we had a couple today, Eric, that actually came in that looked like qualified candidates, huh?
Yeah, yeah, so that's positive.
Yeah, there probably isn't a whole lot more to say about that. Personally, I think it was probably the right thing to do. It was painful to have to pull back, and we saw we had a pretty good candidate, but it, it probably was the right thing to do. Anybody have any questions on that or comments? Okay. Go on to item eight B, which is the software transition. Eric, you ever need to talk about there?
So we really don't, haven't made any progress. I think frankly, that is gonna have to wait until we have a finance director in place, because I don't think, certainly, that's not enough. I don't have enough knowledge in that wheelhouse to shepherd the town through that. So we're, we're basically, we're hoping we get, you know, both for the software and for the audit, we're hoping we get a finance director in pretty quickly. As far as the auditor goes, and this is something, a discussion I wanted to have a little bit with the Board of Finance, and I was supposed to call Mike back today, but I wanted to talk to you all first. And that is the possibility of hiring somebody outside to get us through this audit, you know, which the town has done in the past. You know, just because I think if we wait, depending on how long it takes us to get a finance director on board, we may really be pushing it. You know, getting the audit completed.
But Eric, somebody outside, is that a firm or that, like a contractor? What is that, you know, Bob from Account temps or what?
Yeah, so I would look at two possibilities. One, I would look at the woman that we discussed the software transition with, who's an accountant in, like, Willington, you know, who's done, been basically the municipal accountant for multiple towns of our size anyway, so could, could likely pull it off. And the second one would be potentially to reach out to Beth Bauer. She helped the town out about three years ago before Barbara came on board. I don't have any knowledge of her or any relationship with her. But I, so, I mean, maybe you all do, and maybe you all think that's a good or bad suggestion. I don't know. I'm just putting feeler out there, because I'm, you know, I'm afraid we're gonna end up pretty late in the year. And if we get too late in the fiscal year, you know, they're gearing up for their next year's clients, you know?
And then we'll end up in a situation like we were a couple years ago, it took forever.
Yeah, I, I have kind of two thoughts on that. The first of which, just overarching comment, is that I'd rather we get on top of it now and put ourselves behind the eight ball again, after so many years of us struggling to get an audit in. The second thing I think is, I don't, my memory is not great, but if Beth Bauer is the person I'm thinking of, who helped us, as you said, before Barbara, she's been out of our systems for a while, and I don't know, I don't know if bringing her in, if her institutional knowledge, what her, how valuable that is vis-à-vis somebody who was already into it versus bringing in the person you talked about, the other person you talked about, who is familiar with towns of our size and, you know, has done it in other towns. Maybe they're comparable, I don't know. And I don't even know if Beth would be available.
Right, and I don't know either, I'm, I'm just.
Okay. So, you know, she helped us in the past, even with her help, we struggled to get our audit in.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Seems like it's, there isn't a whole lot of risk or harm in starting to explore your options. Even if somebody just helps smooth the transition a little bit and makes sure the files are in order, we land the finance director sooner than, than, you know, than later.
Right.
We're just that much farther ahead.
And my hope would be that, you know, Barbara did do a, a bunch of work and get our stuff in, in much better order than it had been. So somebody pinch hitting should be easier here in 2021 than it was in, say, 2018. It should be easier to bring someone in to just kind of get us over that hump. So, but yeah, I, I think we should definitely explore that and figure out what the price tag is.
Sure. Good.
Yeah, it could take you a while to get somebody in and onboard, and especially if they don't have a lot of time to dedicate it to it. You know, and maybe piecemeal, you know, day here, day there, you'd want to get them earlier rather than later.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I would say is that although we definitely didn't get the books audit ready this year, we got a lot of what needed to go into the financial statements done. Probably more than three quarters of what needs to be done. But the, in part of my conversation with our auditor is exploring the possibility of what happens if we pay the auditor on the side to complete the financial statements. Because I think two years ago or three years ago, they did complete the financial statements for the town. But I don't know what Michael would, you know, or Mahoney Sable would charge us to do that also. I suspect they're gonna be on the pricey end of things.
It's kind of a conflict.
I don't know. That's, that's a question, because, you know, they're auditing the books, but towns often don't prepare their own financial statements. So I don't know. It's a good question.
Yeah, I did think, and, you know, optimally, you prefer not to have them do that and do the audit. Just, uh,
Sure.
to have that separation of duties. But we'll, we'll see what it comes down to, I guess.
Right, yeah.
Any other questions for Eric on the Finance Director Software Transition or Audit Status? Okay, hearing none. Let's go on to item eight D, which is our CIP Recommendations. We have four now. There are three on the packet agenda. The first is Street Sweeper, the second is the Asphalt Hotbox, the third is the Town Hall Electrical Upgrade, and then Kurt requested we add the additional item for the Fire Commission. So Eric, you want to address the first, first three?
Sure, so the, uh, the probably single most pressing need for public works is to procure a new street sweeper. Our existing street sweeper goes back to the mid 80s. And frankly, we just, we really struggled to keep it running and to keep stuff from falling off of it. You know, it's just, it's old, it's been used in a, in a high-salt environment for its whole life, because it's in New England, so even though it doesn't get used a ton of hours every year, it's well past its normal life expectancy. So a new sweeper, we got a, you know, we, we've started looking at like what we would get ideally, and what we would do is step back a little bit from where we are now to a three-wheeled sweeper. You know, a dedicated purpose-built sweeper. And we priced them out using Sourcewell, which is one of the cooperative buying arrangements. And through Sourcewell, it's about 233,000 new plus shipping. We don't have the money. I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, there's no way we're swinging capital and doing that this year. And if you look at our capital plan, we, we frankly can't accommodate that, even though they last a long time. You know, it, it's not realistic to do that. So what we've, we've started doing is, is taking a real hard look at used equipment. The, the problem is, is that if you're gonna buy a replacement sweeper, ideally, you want to buy a replacement sweeper that comes out of a southern climate, so it's not used in a heavy salt-dominated, which makes it a little tougher, because you're traveling. So we are looking at one machine. Actually, the Public Works Director has taken off about 3:00 in the morning with, with the town's mechanic, Tim, and driving down to Delaware to look at a, a used sweeper. That's a potential purchase. That would be around $69,000, so, uh, uh, and it's about a 10-year-old sweeper, municipal sweeper. Reasonable miles, came out of the south somewhere, not sure what state, but, but south of DC. So we're gonna look at it. So one of the questions I had with the town's attorney is can we just buy it? Because we have a capital equipment fund and we have the money there, and the money was allocated in the last budget, can we buy it without a town meeting? So I put it in your packet, but the opinion from the town's attorney is that since we budgeted for it, we put it in the budget, you know, we can certainly acquire that without going. You know, we can certainly acquire that without going to town meeting, even though it's over the, the point oh five percent of the budget threshold. So we can definitely buy it if the board of finance agrees to it. So my question for you is partially your comfort level in buying a used piece of equipment. I'm somewhere on the fence, but I think the public work supervisors had some pretty good luck buying used equipment off auction if it's done smartly. And basically, we're sending them down there for a day to drive the thing around and operate it and have the mechanic go through it and look at it.
I have a question, Eric. So post, after our meeting, we're gonna have that inspection done. Between now and our next scheduled meeting, this thing is sitting on the market and could be purchased by someone else, yes. So one of my concerns is if we wait, do, do, is there a way to conditionally approve? If our guys go down there and they check it out and they think, wow, this is great, this is, this is what we need. Can we approve it in ahead of time if they, if it meets with their approval? And are we as a board comfortable doing that? That's just a discussion item for everybody, really. You know, because my thought is, if it is good, we don't want to lose it.
Right. And, and that is a problem. You know, it's not that more of them wouldn't come up. So what CIP has approved, the CIA, he made a recommendation that the town spend up to a hundred thousand dollars on a used sweeper if a suitable unit could be determined, and that's their recommendation to the board of finance. You know, so, so that is the question. The, the price tag on this thing right now is sixty-nine thousand dollars. It would be, we did some preliminary looking at shipping, it's somewhere around three thousand to ship it. But I mean, we'll certainly try to, to get them to include the cost of shipping and maybe knock a little bit off if it's a suitable machine.
What was the new, new machine cost again?
Two hundred and thirty-three thousand.
So, okay. So almost exactly, almost exactly one-fourth.
Yeah, and then based on the prior equipment, you've got about two-thirds of its life left. Obviously, maintenance just, you know, can increase sometimes exponentially throughout the, you know, last half of the life of a piece of equipment. But it's still, when you're still looking at return on investment, it's hard to say this would not be a good value.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you're spending one quarter of the cost of the new machine for a ten-year, I mean.
Not a piece of critical equipment that if it breaks down, you've got a problem on the road somewhere, right? You're gonna continue to.
Not like we can't plow a road in the middle of a snowstorm.
Right, but you need to be, you need a functional sweeper too.
We do, we do.
You can fix it, and if it's fixed in a week, you know, it's not gonna cause a problem.
The disaster is if there, if something goes wrong, right? I, I know what you're saying, Mark, and I kind of agree along those same lines, but ten years old is not ancient. If, if, if our people go check it out and they think it's good, I mean, that's a huge savings. Right. And as you said, we cannot, we don't, with everything else we're facing, there's no way we're gonna spend two hundred and forty thousand dollars on a new machine. Ain't gonna happen.
Right. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think considering, you know, considering our needs and the amount of use it will get, we definitely need a replacement sweeper. You know, I'm comfortable rolling the dice on a used machine, you know, considering how much cheaper it is than buying a new one. We know there will be some increased maintenance costs. We do, with this machine, we do have all the maintenance logs. Because, you know, we're, we're basically, if we bought this thing, we would be buying it through the, the dealer that, you know, the equipment dealer down in Maryland. So we, so we have a fair bit of information on it. I mean, basically what they're gonna have to do is just, you know, open it up and take a look at it and, you know, make sure there aren't any major wear items that we identify and make sure the engine's in good shape. But it doesn't have a ton of hours on it.
So, wouldn't we expect it to be lower maintenance than the one we have now that we can barely keep running?
God, I would hope so.
I would think.
The, 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 one of our biggest problems right now is that we, we really struggle to get parts for the one we have. So like, a couple of years ago, the, the whole tank that holds the water rotted out completely. I mean, so the guys refabbed the tank. I mean, they, they basically welded it up and built it from scratch. But I mean, they chewed up an enormous amount of labor doing it. And that's what we can't afford right now. We can't just, we can't afford the shop time it takes to keep it running.
Yeah. Also, keep, keep in mind, the, the town of Columbia, the town of Hebron, and I think the town of Coventry are all using used sweepers to offset their, you know, their fleet and doing the exact same thing that Eric wants to do here. So I highly recommend it. And, and I, I was around when, when the sweeper we had was brand new. It was state of the art back then, and they've been piecing it together for the last probably fifteen to twenty years. So this, this is a good investment, and I, and the, and the guys going down to look at it know exactly what they're looking for, so.
So here's my question, before I actually make a motion, let's just chat about it, but, you know, should we make a motion to conditionally approve the purchase of this vehicle subject to the inspection? If the people we're sending down believe that it is in our best interest to purchase it, should we make a motion that says, okay, as long as they agree with that, they're approved to go ahead and do it?
I wouldn't have a problem with that personally.
Same here.
I do have one question. Hi.
Yep.
Okay. Does a company offer any type of warranty program for a used equipment?
But, but generally not.
Not usually.
Yeah.
As opposed to a new piece of equipment, will we, is there, I, I don't know how municipal equipment works. Is there a warranty?
Typically, we get, we end up with, you know, three or so year warranty on most pieces of equipment we buy when we buy them new.
There, there isn't too much over five out there.
And you're talking about a piece of equipment you want to run for thirty years.
Right.
Well, you may be able to get a warranty, but you're gonna pay for it.
You know, oh yeah, exactly, like you go buy a used car.
What a warranty does on a new piece of equipment is these are all fairly complex. And they often have teething pains when they're brand new. So it's not uncommon to have problems with them in the first six months. You know, on, on any of these specialty pieces of equipment, because it's not like a car coming off the assembly line where they're making hundreds of thousands of them. So what the, what a warranty on a new piece of equipment does is get you through all the teething pains. You know?
All right. Well, based on our discussion, I guess I would make a motion then that the board of finance conditionally purchase of this used street sweeper down in Delaware, that if our inspection team sees the, this piece of equipment and believes that it is in order and is in our interest to purchase, that they should be authorized to do so.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion.
Do we have to put a cap of a dollar amount in there and that, or just?
So the, the purchase price is sixty-nine, the shipping cost is three, that's seventy-two. We want to get under seventy-two. So do we, we could put in a cap of seventy-two?
Well, there's, obviously, there's gotta be sales tax, I would think, somewhere, right?
Yeah, I mean, if you said seventy-five, it would be safe.
I think, I'm thinking seventy-five, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay. That seems reasonable, Diane. Do you want to put in, I mean, so we can amend the motion to say up to seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
This piece of equipment, pay the sales tax and have it shipped to us.
Yeah. Oh, I, I had a question, Eric. Is, is it beyond us going down with our say, the, the newer Peterbilt dump truck with the low bed to pick it up themselves?
Yeah, it's too heavy. We don't have an equipment trailer we could haul it with, and we don't have the towing capacity on our yeah, on our vehicle.
Okay. Just, just a thought.
Hey Eric, did you look into any third-party brokers that do inspections on machines or they do oil analysis? And hydraulic inspections, things like that, because my concern is, you know, it's noble of our staff to go down and try and look at it, but this is what they do day in and day out. And long ago, I, I mean, I'm a trained aircraft mechanic, and there's a lot that can go wrong with a piece of equipment. I feel it's an unfair burden to put on these guys if they give it the green light. And this isn't what they do day in and day out. Without an oil analysis, you're not gonna know how good the engine is, you're not gonna know if the hydraulics are okay. You could, you could have a time bomb. I just think that's unfair to put that on their shoulders.
Good, good, good thought, Dave. Good thought.
Yeah, those services are pretty widely available, right? So.
Yeah, there's third-party services that will inspect the machine, they'll guarantee certain things. I know they're out there. I'm just, I'm not in the heavy equipment business, but uh, I know they have.
Well, even just to send a sample of the oil out for analysis, you can do that as a separate service at a minimum. That, that, that's a good point. Seems to be no prayer. I don't know about the inspection piece, that's.
Yeah, I mean, you could also put pressure gauges to the hydraulic systems. There's a lot you can do, but you know, these guys don't do this day in and day out. They may be a decent mechanic, but you know, it's, it's just asking a lot for, you know, for the town to go below seventy thousand dollars on their opinion. It's just a lot.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not at all opposed to conditioning this on a third-party evaluation. That seems perfectly reasonable to me.
My question would be then, if we're gonna, if we were gonna have a third-party evaluate, do we still want to send our team down? That's gotta cost us some money and waste their time if we're gonna have somebody else check it out.
You know what? I would not be comfortable buying something until we put eyes on it. You know, and we actually take it out and test drive it. And I look at it two ways. One, the public work supervisor that we hired has driven this particular model, and this is the one he specifically is choosing. So he's familiar with, with that unit. You know, and, and Tim's been the guy that does most of the maintenance on our existing sweeper. So between the two of them, they've got a lot of, an awful lot of hours dealing with the sweeper. So I certainly wouldn't want to buy the thing with just a third-party certification. I, I would, you know, I would definitely want our guys on it, you know, and giving it a thumbs up. And if they give it a thumbs up, then we get a third-party evaluation. And then we come to an agreement and write them a check if that's appropriate.
Well, I, I think if, if Dave's, Dave's willing to make that amendment to the, to Rob's motion, and I think with, you know, he's, I'd, I'd agree to that.
By the way, just a quick question, Dave, um, do you know what those sorts of services tend to cost?
It ends up being five thousand dollars. It might be one of something we reconsider, you know? Probably isn't, but it might be, we might want to put some kind of if it's reasonable, but.
Eric, I don't know anything about street sweepers as far as, you know, where you find them, but is there a brokerage place that maybe has five of them available? And we could look at multiple ones and maybe pick out, you know, it, it just sounds like this is the only one down there. Is that correct?
Uh, at this particular location, you know, we've looked at and gone after information on four of them so far, and CN Wood, who's a dealer, is they probably will have two coming in in New Jersey, two additional units. So I mean, like, what I'm telling you is that if we decide this one doesn't really meet our needs, you know, we're not under the gun to pull the trigger on this particular unit. It just, right now, it seems to, to, compared to what the market is, this one seems to be a good deal.
New Jersey models are gonna be models that are exposed to salt, which was your point before.
Yeah.
Correct.
I mean, are these something, I mean, I know, I know there's huge equipment places down like in Georgia, Florida, stuff like that. No, plane tickets only a couple hundred bucks. So I, I, I hope your radius search isn't just drive time.
No, it's not. In fact, we were, I was fully committed to send them down to like North Carolina to look at one. But we've, we got, we got an inspection report on that one and a bunch of pictures. And there were some things that seemed a little questionable, so we decided not to even really go down and evaluate that one. So yeah, I would, I would send them off. I have no problem with that. Yep.
I guess my point would be, I think our time would be better utilized if we could find a larger place that has multiple units. And they could go down and, you know, just use their time efficiently.
I agree.
Well, I think the motion still could apply. You know, it's probably up to Eric to manage that, and Dave's point's well, well taken. I think it's kind of up to Eric to manage the process.
I, I think we need to amend that motion a bit.
Could amend that motion, yeah, if you want to, I don't know, withdraw it, Rob or.
Yeah, well, let's withdraw it. And, and we'll, we'll, we, I think at this point, we should restate it, withdraw it and restate the motion. So I don't know what the process for withdrawal is other than I would call my motion. And then we, we put together something more generic where we approve up to X dollars to A, inspect a machine, including a third-party crew to, to check whatever they need to check and purchase and transport.
Do we want to constrain it that much, or do we want to just make a very strong recommendation that they
I, I guess my point was, I was gonna leave open the possibility of purchasing this one.
Yeah, up to X amount to, you know, to I don't know that we want to constrain them that much to say they have to do that, but, you know, or that if it's two thousand dollars and it ends up being twenty-five hundred dollars for the service, they decide it's of value to do that, we might want to leave that a little more open. I, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I hear you. I'm trying to come up with the best way.
How we construct this, because I don't think we want to make this onerous, but at the same time, you know, they need to do their due diligence over the purchase.
Yeah, and Dave made a bunch of good points, so we want to try to incorporate them. Just trying to think about how we do that and, and leave some flexibility if something comes up that they want to grab, that's just right.
I mean, the other option, you know, which is perfectly reasonable if you're willing to do it, is just let us inspect the thing, get a third-party inspection, come back to you and say yay or nay. And if it's yay, you hold a special meeting when you approve. I mean, it doesn't have to be super onerous. I mean, technically, you only need, what, three?
Four.
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 Yeah, sorry.
I'm fine with that, actually. That's maybe, maybe that is the right answer for this, for this particular machine.
Sure.
And if this one falls through, maybe we go the other route and we think about the process a little more.
Or, or maybe we just keep that process open. I'm actually, you know, the more we learn, the more you're gonna be able to present and say, look, this, these look, you know, this is, this makes sense to us. So that's, that's not a ridiculous, a, a, actually, it's a pretty good approach. I kind of like that rather than try. Really knowing what the landscape looks like and
you, you can find these third-party inspectors in, in about every state, you know, in the unions. If they're willing, going to do what they do for whatever, whatever cost they are. I don't think it's extreme, personally.
All right, Eric, why don't we go that appro, I, I think I agree with these guys. Let's do that.
I have another question before you do that. Yeah, what happens to the old sweeper?
We'll auction it off and hope somebody hauls it away. If not, we'll take it down for scrap metal.
John's, John's is scrap metal, it's, whatever, whatever you get in scrap, that's what it's worth.
Is there any trade-in value to it?
Not at all.
Not, not a unit of that age. No, I, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find somebody to take that. You know, we had, we ran into that not too long ago. We scrapped a bulldozer. You know, we had, we ran into that not too long ago. We scrapped a bulldozer. Um, you know, it was a forty-eight-year-old bulldozer. Um, and, uh, you know, we did try to auction it off, but we ended up getting, giving it back to the dealer for like. I don't know, he gave us about a fifteen-hundred-dollar credit, but it was essentially identical to what John's was going to give us.
That's, that's what it was worth in scrap at John's, the sheet metal.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Um, any other questions on this purchase? I, as a point of procedure, what I would recommend that we do is still vote on Rob's. Uh, motion.
We just voted down.
Given the discussion that we have the option of voting it down and then. Eric can always bring this back to us. We call a special meeting if, if needed and we vote at that time on a separate issue. It's the same, same topic, just a separate, separate motion, I guess it would be.
All right.
Any other discussion? Give everybody a minute to turn their mute button off. Or not? Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote on Rob's motion. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have two ayes, all opposed, say nay, nay.
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 Okay, so that's, I think, four to three. The motion is defeated. All right, thank you. We'll move on.
Was that Louise and Linda?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
And I thought it was, okay, all right. Uh, next item is the, uh, item eight D two, the asphalt hot box. Eric?
Oh, the asphalt hot box, the C I P approved spending up to thirty-three thousand dollars. Or made a recommendation to approve up to thirty-three thousand dollars to purchase an asphalt hot box. Um, we have several quotes. There's really only two major manufacturers of these that have dealers anywhere near us. Um, we're not ready to buy it yet, certainly. Um, and we would want to make a decision on the sweeper. If we really got a sweeper for sixty-nine thousand dollars, we could probably afford the hot box. Out of what's in the capital fund now and maybe supplement it with a little bit of DownAid road money. Um, but we're cer, I, I'm certainly not looking for a motion to purchase this yet. We would give you full specs. Um, but this again would be purchased off the Sourcewell government contract. Um, if we, uh, did it. Um, so basically what it is, is it's a device. It's, it's exactly what it says, a box that you put asphalt in that keeps the asphalt hot. Because the, the problem with asphalt is it has to be delivered to the road and rolled at a pretty hot temperature. Um, if it cools down too much, it doesn't compact. Um, and it just doesn't last. So what ends up happening is we end up getting five or six tons in the back of one of our trucks. And we actually end up using a couple tons and the other four tons just provide the thermal mass to keep it from cooling down too fast. Um, and it's kind of an inefficient use of product, number one. Um, and for filling potholes, you really need some method for keeping it hot. And, and probably the most cost-effective is a hot box. And we also haven't ruled out purchasing a used one. Um, by the time you get a used one in decent shape, it's probably more than twenty thousand dollars. For what we're looking for. So it's not, um. You know, by the time you get one in that range, they're pretty beat up. So, uh, you know, we looked at it, we haven't ruled out pursuing a used piece of equipment for that too. But in that case, it looks like it might be smarter to just own, own up and, and buy it new. Um, but again, we're not looking to make a decision. We're just letting you know that C I P has recommended that purchase. And depending on what we end up doing for a sweeper, we may look to do that in this fiscal year. Or we may look to do it out of next year's capital appropriation.
Eric, I think the, the motion was up to thirty-five thousand. Did you say thirty-two?
Was it thirty-five? Oh, sorry. I wrote it down wrong.
Yeah, because they added in the shipping and something else. I can't remember what else they added in, but it totaled to thirty-five.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately Fred hasn't produced the minutes yet.
Yeah.
So I don't have the actual motions.
Louise is correct on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and the last item that C I P. Recommended was out of the, the Towns Capital Building Improvement Fund. Spending the money to redo some of the electrical work at the town hall. So this addresses kind of three things. Um, it first of all addresses the fact that we have a really old, uh, what's called the stab block electrical panel. Um, which you probably aren't familiar with because, you know, they really haven't made them since the late sixties, early seventies. Um, and they're pretty much illegal today because they have a bad habit of shorting out and electrocuting people. Um, so we really want to get rid of that panel just from a safety perspective. Um, but that is also our, uh, backup or it's a sub-panel. That's also our backup circuits for emergency power when we're working off the generator that's in the fire station. The problem is, is that they did a really lousy job of allocating the circuits for the backup. Um, so there's a lot of crazy things, like there are no plugs in the resident state trooper's office. Um, that work during a power outage, which is a problem, especially since that's where our server is. Because our server goes down every time we're on backup power, which is not good. Um, my office, for instance, none of the lighting circuits work, uh, several of the outlets work. Uh, but the un, really unfortunate thing is like the last couple of times. You know, I was running, you know, my table lamp from home. So I could see the work on my computer when we were out of power. So we have to address that. So it's one, a safety issue and it's two, getting the backup circuits correct. Um, we've spent a lot of time with, uh, Rick Langley at Lenko. Figuring out and really detailing and coming up with a scope of work to, to address our needs. And the other big thing is we want to make sure whatever we do is forwardly compatible. If we change generation systems, because in the future we may, we may end up with an automatic transfer switch. You know, there's a lot of things we may do. You know, we may not always run off the generator from the fire station. If we put in a new community station or new community center, we may end up going with a combined generator. So we, we tried to do this in such a way that whatever we do is forwardly compatible with everything else. Um, so the total bill for that is around eighty-three hundred bucks. So it's not cheap. Um. And I didn't go out and get multiple quotes on this. And the reason is there's an enormous amount of design work involved in figuring out exactly what we need. And in truth, I didn't want to go out and do that with, with multiple vendors. Um, I trust Rick and, and that's why I, I kind of chose them. Although it is over the threshold at which we would normally operate without multiple bids. So my first question to you as a board is, are you willing to give me the authority to do that? Or do you want me to turn around and multi-bid this?
Eric, when you talked about design, uh, considerations. What, I mean, are you talking about a price tag for the town on that? Like, in other words, every time we have some contractor come in, we, to pay them to work up the specifications? Or is it just time and effort?
It's just time and effort. Um, because I, I will tell you that Rick and his secondary electrician. Probably spent three and a half hours or four and a half hours in the town hall, just figuring out how this could even be done. Um, which is, it, it's not a trivial process. And we're actually going to have to build a wall in that room. Um, you know, and finish essentially a small pony wall. Because we, we physically don't have the space for it where we are now. Um. You know, so, so that's kind of where I'm looking at. Um, if you want me to pursue other options, I'm, I'm more than happy to. Um, I just, my concern with this is, this is a, a complex enough project. I'm more concerned with getting it right than, you know, getting it, uh, done really cheaply. If that makes sense.
If, if I could say, and I had, I had a lot to do with the fire station complex. Twenty-eight, uh, plus almost twenty-nine years ago. The, uh, this, this is the past administration not thinking ahead. Uh, for the future of our town, which, uh, we're at that crossroads right now. There's a sixty KW generator system at the fire station that was tied in basically to top, to run town hall at the time. Now, like I said, I'm talking twenty, twenty-eight years ago, when that, when that was considered. I'm looking at it, 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 a standalone generator system for town hall. And whatever future additions may be added to that. Um, what Eric is doing right now is basically a, a, a patch. To get the town hall up and running the way they should be. Uh, with a, with a new panel and, and what, uh, Langley Electric's going, I mean, Lenko Electric's going to do for him. Um, I, I've looked at it. I, I know, I know it, uh, you know, firsthand of, of, of why we're at this, this, this crossroads with that. That system. I mean, you, you can't even use, utilize plugs in the resident trooper's office. Uh, you can't utilize plugs in the registrar's office. Uh, this is basically an upgrade to get everybody going in town hall for now. Um, we're, we're still looking at, uh, some long-range, um. Upgrades to town off, to, to town office building, especially if they add on the, uh, community center like they're talking about. So, uh, I highly recommend that we approach this. And, uh, it's, it's much, much needed.
I, I think it's needed. That only is a question. Question is whether we bid out.
Sure.
I don't care if we've bid it out because. Lenko for us has been a known commodity. He does a good job for us. He's knows our history. He does a lot for us and he's a town resident. Do you know what I mean? He's not a stranger to us.
To go along with Diane saying, again, and I, I think I've, I've, or. All of the work that Lenko has done at the fire station is, is at no cost. To the Board of Fire Commissioners or the Town of Andover. And he's done numerous upgrades in that building since it was built in nineteen eighty-nine. So, uh, uh, I, I don't have a problem with, uh, Rick Langley. Doing all the work for the Town of Andover at this time. Like Diane says, he, he's a resident, he's a taxpayer and, and, uh, he, he gives us a good deal. He's not, he's not gonna, he's not gonna screw us on anything, plain and simple.
Yeah, I don't dis, go on, Dave, sorry.
My only comment is. I don't know this gentleman. I trust you guys. But looking at this without emotion, if we get sued. Because we didn't send something out to bid. Um, we open ourselves up to liability if it goes over that threshold. And that's my only concern. And, you know, part of the contractors and part of consultations. Um, I give free consultations. I don't get reimbursed for them. And a lot of contractors do. It has no bearing on this gentleman or his quality or work ethic. All I'm looking at this is, how does this look at from the town? If someone from the outside looks at it and has an axe to grind. That's all I'm concerned about.
Also, just to, to speak on top of that, um, you know, the reason we have the policy in place that we have in place today. Vis a vis bidding out projects. Is that the way things were done in the past? Which was that at the time, uh, the then first selectman had, had a relationship with someone and trusted them. And just hired them up and never even looked around to anyone else. Um, by the way, it sounds like this guy's fantastic. Uh, I, I don't, I'm not trying to rip him at all. And I, I would be completely happy if we ended up using him. My concern is circumventing the process we've put in place that was put in place for a good reason. That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely. And, and that is why I, I said before, you know. That's why essentially I'm dumping it back in your lap and saying to you as a board of finance. You know, are you willing to do that or not? And, and if the answer is not. Um, we'll bid it out, um, with multiple locations. I, I'm not opposed to doing that. Um, I just, my concern is that the town. You know, has gotten burned a bunch of times by using low bidder electricians and hasn't ended up with the result they wanted.
Are we, are we actually obligated to take the lowest bid?
No, no, we're not. No, we're not. No.
Okay, so that would be my thought.
I agree. And, and I can, I can honestly tell you, knowing Rick, Rick Langley. And his father, who, who started the business ye, uh, years ago. Um, he won't have a problem with us bidding it out. He know, he knows, he, he's given an honest bid each time and will not have a problem with going to bid. And I, I.
Sure.
You know, you're never obligated to take the lowest bid unless you really write some stupid RFP language that, that says. You know, you, you, what you're, you know, you're obligated to act in the best interest of the Town of Andover. So I don't really see that as an issue. You know, one option, I'm looking at this quote and. This is a pretty fair quote. Anybody who's dead and he kind of worked on. You know, we've, I've been involved within some respects with the, with my company. And, uh, you know, this is, is extremely reasonable. Um, you guys have vouched for the quality, so I don't have a problem there. I, I do share the concern, uh, that Rob raised and to some extent, Dave, I, and I don't think. Being sued is necessarily a problem, but there are reasons we put the procedures in place. I don't like the idea of us circumventing them just because it's convenient for us. I don't think that we need to have any long bid out process. I think you could tighten this up real quick, Eric. And, you know, and, and make, you know, and, and do it fairly expeditiously without tying up a lot of your time and a lot of the town employees' time. You've got one bid, you can, you could, you know, you can contact and throw it out there. I'm not sure exactly with the language of the policy states, but.
But I said, Mark, I think the charter requires three, three bids.
Three bids.
And that's, we already got one with, with Lenko and it, it wouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, so you, you throw out the scope and you, and you, you throw it out there. If you can get two. Either two replies or two no bids, you know, with, as long as you're reasonable in your efforts. To me, that's, that's probably meeting the spirit of the intent of that policy.
Right. And I, and I'm completely fine if we land on Lenko. Based on what you guys are saying, it's probably the right answer. Uh, I, I know nothing about electrical, so I'm, I'm going with what everybody else is saying, but.
To put in perspective, Rick comped the town right around thirty thousand dollars in labor and materials last year. When you look at what he did for the fire department and the town. Um.
Uh, we can't act on that though, and I.
No, I know, I know.
Not, not asking, not asking to.
Right, right. But it's, it, you know, we know he's not trying to gouge us. We know that.
But, but we have a policy and a procedure and I think we probably need to, uh, make a good faith effort to follow that.
Yeah, not a problem. Not a problem.
My thoughts.
Agreed.
Any further? Questions or comments on that? I don't know that we need to vote on that or make some resolution, but I, it sounds like the general thinking though, Eric, is you probably need to go out and try to. Secure a couple more bids in a fairly expeditious manner.
Sure.
I think very, Eric, Eric reports back in the next meeting and, uh, and we get it done.
I, I don't think we need a motion or anything because we're, we're following procedure. I think the motion that would have been required is if we were going to circumvent.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna so help, but yeah, it's a good point.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I guess we can move on then to, uh, item eight D four, which is, uh, the new agenda item that Kurt. Uh, asked be added to the agenda. Kurt, you want to address that one?
Yes, I will. Uh, at the, at the last, uh, capital improvements, uh, commission meeting. They, uh, I had made a request, uh, for one item from the Board of Fire Commissioners. Uh, we had a list of five that we, we put down as, as in, in priority. Uh, sequence, uh, you know, from one to five of large items other than fire apparatus. That the fire department is looking at in, in the next, uh, you know, uh, few, few coming budgets, basically. And, uh, the first, the first priority was a battery-operated, uh, Hurst. Well, we said Hurst, that's because that's what we have had since the early seventies. But a vehicle extrication system, battery-operated vehicle extrication system. Um, and, uh, that was our request for that. Uh, I had sent RFPs. And, uh, that was our request for that. Uh, I had sent RFPs out to. Three of the major manufacturers and, and, uh, equipment suppliers that we use, uh, one being Firematic Supply. Company Incorporated in Rocky Hill, uh, Shipman's Fire Equipment in Waterford. And, uh, Fire Tech and Safety, which is a Massachusetts company. Uh, the fire department deals with those three. Pretty much exclusively for different types of equipment. Um, and our, and RFPs have gone out on, uh. On, on number one, the, uh, the, the battery operated vehicle extrication system. The system we have right now, uh, we have equipment dated back into the early seventies. Uh, when we first, uh, started the, you know, vehicle extrication with the old Route Six, if, uh, a lot of the, a lot of the, you know, some of you people remember. Uh, we used to live out there for, for bad crashes, you know, and, and cutting people out of cars. Uh, that particular system, we've, we've basically added to throughout the years. And, and tried to upgrade, uh, when possible, is now becoming obsolete because it's based on a hydraulic. Uh, system, uh, which takes up a lot of room on, on the vehicle. Um, you have numerous, uh, components making up, uh, from a generator to a, uh. A power supply to hoses and things like that. Those, that's all becoming obsolete now with the battery operated tools, which you could take. Anywhere right off the truck. Um, so that was the, the reason for the priority number one request. Uh, upon further review of the capital improvements, um, they looked at all five requests. Uh, figuring, um. What, what we have in the fire equipment fund presently and the second request, uh. Was a, uh, commercial, uh, washer dryer for our, uh, the fire department's turnout equipment gear. Um, NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, requires us to clean our turnout gear. Um, which is quite expensive, uh, between the helmets, the coats, the boots, the pants, the gloves, the hoods. Everything else that firefighters are required to wear to go into a, a structure type fire. Uh, which we, we don't have a whole lot of, but we do have a few and have had, have had a few in the last, last year. In town and in out of town to, uh, uh, clean the gear and, uh. In a, in a, in a commercial type washer with a commercial type dryer. Based on the carcinogens, uh, that, that the gear receives in, in a house fire. Uh, which NFPA has proven, uh, is a cause of cancer in, uh, in firefighters, uh, throughout the country. So that was our second request and the third request, uh, was a replacement of our. Self-contained breathing apparatus air compressor, which is stationed, it's, it's mounted in the, in the back room of our firehouse. And that fills the, the, uh, SCBA bottles used at our, uh, air packs that the firefighter is used. To actually go into a, a smoke filled environment, you know, in a, in a house fire or, or any, anything else, maybe a CO call, things like that. All right. The present compressor was purchased from Shipman's Fire Equipment twenty-six, well, not twenty-seven years ago. Um, we, we've kept it upgraded. Um, uh, but basically it's, it's, uh, it's, it's becoming antiquated. Um, the newer compressors, uh, have some different features, uh, and, and the CIP thought it best that. We, uh, that, that, well, that they grant the three, uh, requests, uh, in priority. That the fire commission had to capital improvements. And basically the funding would come out of the existing fire equipment fund. Uh, Eric and, uh, Adrian Mandeville had, had, you know, they, they kind of did a lot of figuring and. And, uh, basically, you know, what we have in the fund itself, uh, it, it could all be taken out of there. So, um. I went in asking for one request and they, uh, they granted us three, which, uh, you know, I thought it was Christmas time. So. But basically, uh, those are the three that were, were requested and, and up to a hundred thousand dollars total. Out of the fire equipment fund for all three, uh, requests. I do have RFPs out to those three companies that I discussed. And I'm, I'm still awaiting right now the, uh, the request for proposals on each stating that the town. Upon approval of the, um, capital improvements, uh, board of finance, board of selectmen and town meeting. You know, the, 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 the pricing that, that they do submit has to reflect that up in, and where it could be purchased till July first of, uh. Two thousand twenty-one. So, uh, that's basically what, uh, the capital improvements approved.
I have a budgetary question, um, regarding the equipment fund. Um, if you're talking about taking a hundred, up to a hundred thousand dollars out of it. Um, what's in there now? Does anybody know? And is that separate, remind me, is that separate from the fund that we have set up? To, uh, ultimately purchase new fire trucks?
I'll, uh, I'll, I'll push that to Eric and, uh, because he, he just not on, so.
So the answer is we, for the fire department, we have a single fund. Um, that fund currently as of today has thirty-three thousand, uh, five hundred dollars in it.
I see.
We're anticipating if we fully fund the capital allocation of adding a hundred thousand dollars to it. And that is based on the long-term plan that the fire department has submitted for capital equipment. Um, basically if you, you take amortize that over each year and you say each year. The town needs to come up with roughly a hundred thousand dollars towards that fund.
That's what I remember.
The, the CIP basically looked at it and said, well, the reality is all three of those items. You know, are on the docket and are gonna need to be spent before the next time. We purchase a large scale piece of equipment. So whether you purchase one of them now and two of them next year. It really doesn't matter and you're better off purchasing, you know, front loading that now because they are needed now. Um, so that was CIP's decision, right or wrong. Um, obviously the money won't be in there unless we fund that capital allocation. And, uh, um, then it could be spent as of July.
Okay, that answers my question.
And the, the, the other, uh, two large items that, that we had in our list of five are a, uh. A complete replacement of our SCBA air packs, the self-contained breathing apparatus. Uh, which, which the chief had proposed to the Board of Fire Commissioners, uh, twenty packs. And twenty, uh, spare bottles to go along with those packs. Um, estimated cost, I, I don't have that right now. Uh, but that, that was our, our fourth request. That's, that's, that's coming, you know, to the town. And then last but not least was, uh, twenty complete sets of turnout gear. Which average anywhere from, uh, six to eight thousand dollars per firefighter to outfit them. Um, and basically NFPA again recommends that every ten years, the turnout gear be replaced. Um, and that's based on twenty firefighters that we have certified firefighter ones or, 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 uh. You know, twos or firefighter threes, state of Connecticut certified, uh, people that we have. So. Uh, right now we're looking at about, about twenty sets of, of turnout here, uh, also as a, as a major, uh. Uh, capital request. So tho- those were the, the total of the five items that we need to do within the next, um. You know, two to three years, basically, based on the, uh, presently what we have, so.
That's like a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, at least.
Six to eight, you said, times twenty?
Uh, six to eight, uh. Well, the, the, we have, we have twenty fire, we have twenty firefighters that are certified, uh, you know, uh, interior firefighters. That would be getting the, uh, you know, be using the air packs and also getting the, uh, the, the newer turnout gear, which has to be, you know. Uh, right. Turned over every, every ten years.
And if the turnout here costs six to eight, midpoint seven, seven times twenty.
All of that, yep.
Hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, th- those are, those are the large items that we have other than fire apparatus in, in our, uh, in our, in our plan. And, and as you know, the fire commission does a, uh, a five, a ten and a twenty-year, uh, replacement plan, both for equipment. Major equipment and, uh, fire apparatus.
Kurt, uh, uh, this is a little off topic and we'll talk about this some other time, but just, just to put it in your mind.
Yep.
Uh, have you guys had any issues with, um, what's called PFOA or PFAS is, uh, claiming about the, the firefighting foam itself? Being a problem?
Oh gosh, yeah. It, it was all based out of the, uh, uh, Bradley Airport and the, uh. Uh, the, the firefight, the, the state of Connecticut, uh, firefighters there that to protect the airport. When they use that foam for that, uh. Oh gosh, what was it? That, that, that plane, that, uh, that, that, that older plane that crashed with everybody on it? And then, and then basically the foam got into the Farmington River somehow and, oh, it, that, that's had major effects. And, and we, we've all had to basically get rid of the foam that we had that, uh, is, is not good, basically. And, uh, and purchase new stuff. And, uh, you know, Chief Mike has, has stepped up. And, uh, basically got rid of the, they actually had a, a collection point for the older foam. And we had a bunch of it because we don't use it that often. Um, and he, he interchanged it with, uh, with, with the newer stuff. That's okay.
That's really good to hear because that's a huge issue at my job right now. Yeah, because I, you know, I mean, I'm on the insurance side. And we're getting absolutely slammed with those claims. So, good to know.
We, uh, we, we should be up to date. Tha- thanks to, thanks to Chief Mike and, uh, you know, and the, uh, fire commission because we did approve him the, the funds to, uh. To buy the replacement foam and basically get rid of the foam that we had and we had a lot of it.
Good.
So.
Uh, I'm good.
That's basically it, Mark.
Sorry, mute button again. Any other questions for Kurt? It's good overview.
Like, like I said, I do, I do have RFPs out to those three, uh, manufacturers for the, uh, three items that, uh, CIP. Has, has approved. Um, you know, we, we still don't have approval from the, uh, the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen. According to course, the town meetings. So, um, but that's, uh. Once I get those, I will share them, uh, you know, with the, uh, fire commission, the, um, capital improvements and, uh, and everyone else.
Good, thank you. It's good overview. It's good to know it's coming down the road and sounds like stuff we're gonna need to do. All right. Okay, our next agenda item is eight E, which is to schedule the budget workshop. So I think we have a couple of options here. One would be to go ahead and preliminarily schedule a few of these, um, in the packet Amanda included a, uh, calendar. Uh, thanks to the wonders of remote meetings, uh, we really are limited too much in terms of conflicts with other. Meetings, as long as it's not like a CIP or something, we're gonna lose, uh, potential, um. Attendance due to other, uh, other, uh. Committee meetings that people are on. Um, so we can either prelim, you know, I said, we could, we could schedule some or we could. Postpone it until we actually have a, have a, uh, budget, which is probably not gonna be until. March first, from what it sounds like. Um, or we could just go ahead and put some on the calendar.
Um, just speaking for me, I, I just speaking generally, Mark, I, I've mentioned this in the past. It's. Still continues to be the case that the front half of the week is bad for me. Um, just based on when I have my kids. Um, I am generally available, you know, Wednesday and Thursday nights. I now unfortunately. Um, Friday nights have no, and not that we ever do Fridays, but Fridays are not bad for me too. So I'm basically.
Gonna propose Fridays now.
Yeah, right. Wednesday, Thursday is best for me. Um, I can potentially make other nights work, but. You know, I'll have kids in the background and it'll be a lot harder.
I don't know on Fridays.
Yeah, so tha- that's my take. My also, my other take would be that. Unle- unless and until we have something to act upon, something to look at, I don't know what a workshop does for us.
Yeah, I would agree with that. It probably doesn't make sense to schedule anything until we have really something in hand. Um, I do think that it would behoove us individually as we get various report outs, et cetera, documents that we can start reviewing that we. We may want to monitor the Board of Selectmen, uh, workshops just to kind of see where that's going. Um, and, uh, I'll, I'll try to do that when possible and. And, uh, distribute the documents that, uh, come out of that to the Board of Finance. Uh, just, you know, so everyone's kind of apprised of it. I would agree, it doesn't make sense for us to meet until we actually have that. So, you know, I guess the real question is, do we want to go ahead and throw something on the calendar for March? Um, one or two or, or three, you know, Wednesdays, when we did the poll last, last fall to establish our. Calendar for this year, Wednesday seemed to work well for everybody. I, I would propose we just stick with that unless somebody's got a conflict.
I agree.
You know.
I'm good with Wednesday.
Wednesday's fine.
So it looks like in, just looking at the calendar here, um. March tenth is a Board of Ed meeting, uh, if there's a conflict there or we don't want to double, oh, double up with that, but the third. And the seventeenth are open.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would almost propose that we schedule meetings for both of those dates. If we do not have a, uh, a budget in hand before the first or second, we probably will want to cancel the third just because we're. Not, well, potentially, we may not really have a chance to digest it. I mean, it, it all depends. You know, if it comes to us that day, you know, I, I personally, I'm gonna want to go through it before we have any discussions over it. So. But it, it can't hurt to put it on the calendar and at least establish that. And then we can always add, add meetings, uh, as needed.
That works for me.
And the good thing about March is, you know, you got a bunch of cracks at it. We get five Wednesdays in a row.
Good for us.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, that, that works for me. I, I, I like that plan, uh, tentatively scheduling the third, the seventeenth, and then we have a regular on the twenty-fourth. And we can kind of go from there.
Seventeenth to St. Patrick's Day, if anybody has a strong feeling about that, but, uh. You know, I, I would propose we at least set those two up and then we have a regular scheduled meeting on the twenty-fourth. I don't see any personal conflicts for me.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that.
We may well need other meetings too, but we can schedule them as we, as we go. Uh, does anybody want to make a proposal or a, um, motion rather?
Sure, I move that we, uh, schedule budget, budget workshops at seven PM, uh, March third and March seventeenth. Was that correct dates? March third and March seventeenth?
Yep.
To, uh, complement our normal meeting on the twenty-fourth to work up our budget.
But you want to second the motion?
I'll second.
Thanks, Linda.
Yeah, because Linda, tie your hand first and that's your.
Anything's better than a five-hour marathon like we had last year.
Oh my God, the wonder we got off the, we got off at like eleven fifty-nine. Yeah. I still remember that. We all have scars, you know?
And, and let, let's, let's tell Ram and AES to be, uh, be prepared and available.
Right, yeah. It's a good point, Kurt.
And, and to wear armor.
Whatever they gotta do, I don't care.
I think they'll know after yesterday's Board of Selectman meeting.
Yeah, I don't think Val was too pleased about that.
Well, you know, it's a learning experience, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, uh.
He's new.
Yeah. All right, um, anybody, any of the further questions or discussion over that? Okay, let's take a vote on the, uh, motion to hold meetings on the third and the seventeenth. All in favors, aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Sounds like no, motion passes. Thank you. Any other discussion on additional meetings?
As needed, basically.
Yeah, as you, okay. All right, let's move on in our agenda. The next item is, uh, item nine A, the approval of the regular meeting minutes from Wednesday to September sixteenth, twenty twenty. Any discussion over those?
So moved. So moved.
Okay, Kurt moves to approve the meeting, so I have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Louise seconds. Any discussion? They looked right to me. Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor of the the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. You opposed? Any abstention?
I don't know. I don't stand.
Okay, David Thains. And motion passes, thank you. Move on to item number ten on the agenda, which is liaison reports. Um we already got a good overview of the CIP. Uh progress, that's good. Good to hear when things are moving along there. Um anything else to report?
Um the senior setting center building committee, so that is getting back on track. Um Ed Zerisli has stepped up to be the chair of that committee now. And we're having our next meeting February eleventh to walk through the first draft drawings that um. I think Adrian did them. Adrian's gonna walk us through them. And then from there, once we get that, then we'll probably put it out for. Architect to do some design work. Awesome. So that's kind of where we're at.
Good. Do you guys have a uh planned budget or are you just?
We don't have anything yet. We're just really, it's all concept right now, so.
Understand where it's gonna fall, okay.
Yeah.
Interesting. All right, hot topic in the town of Andover for good reason.
Yeah.
Ah, we don't need a budget. Just wing it, Mark.
Didn't we have a fund for that, though? Wasn't there some money put aside?
We do, we do. We currently have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside for that bill.
Do we have a significant nest egg there?
Okay.
A long way to go, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Lot of planning and and forward thinking, I think needs to happen with that one.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Anybody have any other questions for Diane or anything else to report?
Um I do want to add one more thing with the CIP meeting.
Yeah, Louise, thanks.
Ki- Carol Lee from the Rec Department was there and she and Shannon are working together, Shannon Loudon. In regards to a possible. Playscape idea, uh there's an Andover resident in town who would like to donate ten thousand dollars. To build, to have something going as a playscape for his wife. And um right now, there's a lot of unknowns, so there. There's a, there's a lot of um. Questions that still have to be determined as like the area and possible grants and things like that. So they're still working on that and it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a progress, a process.
Interesting, that's interesting, good. I look forward to hearing more about that.
Okay.
I always like to hear about people giving us money.
Yeah, so it's very, very generous.
Yes, definitely.
All right, anything else from our liaison committees or related items? Okay, we'll move on to item number eleven, which is our board open discussions. Anybody else have anything else they want to bring before the board?
No.
Yeah, I I had one item, uh and it's it's mainly for Eric. Uh on Monday, actually, I I contacted Town County Mutual Aid to see where everybody was going as far as um uh a fire alarm monitoring. And I got, I got some, uh I got three different uh. Uh vendors that are doing, you know, uh monitoring for other towns that are in the same boat that we are. Based on Town and County not uh pulling the plug uh July first of twenty twenty-one. Um. I talked to Wally about it and uh apprised him of the situation. And I uh on Monday, I have Dubaldo Electric from Manchester coming in to. Um look at the different alarm systems, both in the public works, uh the school, the library, the firehouse. Uh Town Hall, Old Town Hall. Um and uh just just hoping that you. You or or maybe Jay would be available to uh to to work with this guy coming in. He he's one of uh three different names that I received from Doug Racico at Town County Mutual Aid. Uh based on uh different towns that are using these new vendors. Uh so hopefully.
And he is part of a monitoring service?
He 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 uh he does monitoring service and also does installs of new systems. So uh we can get, we can get one of our uh, one of our bids, uh you know, for both services. Monitoring services and maybe installation of a new system for Public Works and the uh the Grange Hall at the same time. Uh but did, just hoping that maybe you and Jay would be available to meet with my, you know, myself and Mr. Dubaldo from Manchester.
Um I definitely will be. What we'll need to do is we will need to. Uh if you have more contact information for them, I will clear it with the school because we'll need access to the school.
Yes.
I gotta tell them, you know, a little ahead of time. We can't just barge in there. They get a little feisty about that stuff.
Well, as as you know, after after the last CIP meeting, my my job was to take care of the monitoring and Adrian was gonna take care of the. The new system installation, but I did did talk to Adrian and also talked to Wally Barton about it, so uh they're both on board with uh with each. And I have two other vendors that Town County Mutual Aid recommended uh as far as monitoring services go, so we can get some uh. Get some good bids on it, so.
Okay. Great. Yeah, I I will be avail, I will make sure I make myself available Monday for when they're gonna be here.
We're 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 gonna start at Public Works, supposed to meet me there around ten AM.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Um. We have any other open discussion? All right, hearing none, we can move on to agenda item twelve, which is our public speak. We have any public. Would like to speak?
Probably nobody want to listen to us tonight.
That's one of the benefits of having a five-hour meeting, everyone's gonna avoid the. Subsequent subsequent.
You just outlast people, is that?
It is one strategy.
Yeah.
All right, hearing no public speak, uh we will uh move on to number thirteen adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn. I moved to adjourn, rather.
Okay. Rob moves to adjourn. Louise seconds. Any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's still time, extension. Okay, hearing none, passes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks, Mark, as usual. Thanks, Amanda. Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, folks.
Have a good night.
Rest, it's gonna be a mid-season. Thank you, buddy. Take care and be safe.
See you soon.
Bye.